Good evening and welcome to the Kittensass County Public Hospital District Number One Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome everybody that's here and welcome those that are connected via Zoom. Mandy, could you do a roll call, please?
Bob Davin?
Here.
Eric Bolovina?
Here.
Matt Olman?
Here.
John Ward?
Here.
Gary Clark? Julie Peterson?
Here.
Scott Olender?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Here.
Vicky Mataro?
Here.
Here.
Rhonda Holden?
I'm here.
Michelle World?
I'm here.
Ron Erlacher?
Here.
Jeff Yamada?
Here.
Amanda Scott?
Here.
Dr. Albright?
Jeff, here.
Tricia Stenak?
She's here.
Jason Eller? And then anyone else on the line for Gaby?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mandy. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Second by Terry. Aye, aye. Close. We have the consent agenda, item three. I'm going to approve. Motion by John. Second by Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. Is there anybody that has a public comment? Not seen anybody. I want to make a quick comment. I became a grandfather last week. My oldest and his wife gave birth here in this hospital. Even though we weren't able to be with them physically, we were up through the window. I was just like, the staff was amazing. They, staff was amazing when we gave my wife, we gave birth, I didn't give birth. My wife gave birth to our youngest, who's 20, and then it's the same group that's still there, some of them. And they were just amazing for a young couple who having their first baby. It just really made it a wonderful experience, so I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So, do you have a boy, girl?
A girl, six pound one, one ounce. She's beautiful. Golly, I'm, yeah, I didn't know it would be like this, but. Yeah, so we're excited. Do you just have boys? Or do you have a girl? No, I have my daughter. Second child. Okay. Granddaughter, and everyone was healthy, and there were some potential complications, but everything went really smooth. Dr. Dawson was amazing. Johnny G. Jarman was amazing. Beth Olson was amazing. Everybody was, it was how you want it to, how you kind of imagined things to be, it's how it was. Even though we were on the other side of the window, it was still good. So, grateful for our OB department. Or, no, it's not called OB now.
Family birth.
Family birth place. Anyway, that's my public comment.
Very nice.
So, we have presentations.
We do. So, do we have Orin and Dr. Thomas on? Ah, there we go. We have Orin.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, I'm on right now. I'm going to share my screen in a minute. I think Dr. Thomas is running a little bit behind. I don't know if there's any way to push anything ahead, or I can get started with the presentation, whatever you guys prefer. He's just finishing up with a few patients. You know, sometimes we have urgent matters that need to be attended to. So, a couple of things came up. He's just wrapping up with.
Now, we can easily go into our reports and dashboards. Maybe we'll get through Julie's and then come back to you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay. So, Mandy.
Um, I, yeah, just wanted to ask, let me ask for a brief report this month. Mostly because, at the moment, we're starting to think about transitions with the management team and the COVID vaccine clinic. It's the final push to get, you know, it's opened up to all folks who want it. And so, my staff's pretty involved, although it's starting to come back to the office. Looking at the dashboard, it's just one comment I'd make is that we recognize in our focus on Gibson and her new role as the QIAR and to have some renewed focus on census. And. Want me to mention anything about Tuesday or?
You know, we talked about that just a moment ago. Yeah, go ahead. And I think the board's aware that we had an unplanned visit by the Joint Commission to talk to our lab folks. And Mandy spent most of her day with Joyce from the Joint Commission. So, yeah, it was all in all, it was, it was a fire drill. It was stressful, but we have an outstanding lab staff, and I think that's shown through. So, why don't you?
Yeah, and I mean, things that they found are just, I think, we've started to work on. But why another focus of hers that we're going to speak with too is blood reviews. And so, she began some work, and this will just, I think, even further prioritize some of that work to be done this year as far as blood administration processes and making sure where we're at with that is more visible. And it went really well. I'm really excited to do CNV, I'd say. I think I, I recognized when I was looking at some of their suggested corrective actions, that the Joint Commission seems to focus on policies and education, which is important. But that's not necessarily the most reliable message for creating safe and stable systems. Just training and a policy, it's actually, you know, making it impossible to make mistakes. Standardization and simplification. So, I'm excited to work with some of the other accreditation agencies this year, CNV and the OHA. I feel like they have got more, that plan a little more. So, we'll of course do policy and education, but we're going to add our standardization and simplification to it, too.
You know, the thing that struck me is I, I am fully aware that blood banking is, blood administration is an incredibly complex, very quality-focused function in the organization. I know that. I don't know why. I don't know what all the moving parts are. And what I learned through this survey is, and it was really interesting because while blood administration and management is a lab function, it immediately transitions over to nursing. And this is one of those places where you have two clinical teams that have to work very, very closely together. And, you know, Vicky and Stacy and Rhonda were having that conversation during the survey. So, again, it's one where I've always nodded when people talk about blood banking. I understand that it's complicated, but listening to all the moving parts, all the quality, everything that needs to be managed. And then again, that handoff, Dr. Samquist, you know, drove up from Walla Walla to be part of this survey. But I just have a new appreciation, I guess, for how important communication and that warm handoff and that coordination between nursing and the lab is in that function.
One thing I was really pleased to share, too, is, so, one of the things we're looking at is the culture in the lab, too. And it was really neat to be able to show that we have done this hospital survey, patient safety culture in 2019, the work that's been done in the lab, particularly the engagement survey and where we're at now, as well as sharing with them the GEMBs that you have done in lab and that we do routinely for quality assessment, performance improvement, our COPI GEMBs. So, I document, and Dr. Samquist joins all of those GEMBs. And so, it really told a nice story of kind of where we've been and where we're going in the lab and some of the priorities. So, I mean, that, it's come up in GEMBs about proficiency testing, which this is just, I think, the next iteration of improvement from that, or even about expansion and redundancies. So, that had all come up, and you could see the progress in notes from that. So, I appreciate the board's participation in those GEMBs. It does show how it is a priority, but also I'm proud that we have the processes we have for quality improvement because we're able to show, you know, this is what we do every day. It's not just a plan we have.
Yeah. We're still waiting for the report. And I guess the other thing I will say is sometimes when you walk away from one of these surveys, you go, well, they had to find something, so we're going to, you know, we're going to go through this activity because the surveyor came all the way from Florida. In this case, we all went, yeah, this is good work. This is a good place for us to focus our attention. And as Mandy said, most of it was already on the radar. So, it is good work, and we look forward to genuinely improving the process.
Do you say that there's a, I mean, I saw the detailed email you sent out, which I really appreciate. And it sounds like they're doing really good work there. Is there some theme for, or some kind of general, just one sentence, something of what's going really well, what we're doing really well that they were sort of impressed by, and sort of what we can kind of work on?
I'll.
Or is it just different?
Go ahead.
I would say that, well, two things. Unlike every encounter I've had previously with Joint Commission, this was a constructive process. And one of the things that they called us out for was the culture. The fact that staffing in was open, that they didn't have the sense that anybody was covering anything up, that everybody was open to feedback, and Joyce found that impressive.
Yeah, great.
I think the other thing, other theme I noticed is, as Julie said, there were things we already were working on, and it's just like that next step of improvement, and they're easy. It's not, it's not things that are controversial, or we're going to have to get everybody on board. It's really things that are simple for us to fix.
One example was something that Joyce identified as a deficiency that existed in 2019 that was corrected in 2020. So, obviously, we were aware of it. We had addressed it. Stacy called out that, yeah, we know that was something we missed in 19, and we fixed it.
She said, yeah, I know, but this is a retrospective evaluation. So, you know, we do a really, really good job here when others, the Department of Health, Joint Commission, CMS, genuine, and even with our financial audits and with the state audit, genuinely welcoming the opportunity to improve and learn about best practices. I, you're going to have a hard time putting us in a defensive posture. I mean, these people come and say, she was just coming off a trip to Oklahoma and going down to Texas. I mean, she's all over, and bringing the perspective of best practices from all over the country. So, I think we do a really good job, and staff does a really good job of taking that in in a very positive way.
Just literally, how much warning do you get? Like, they call you from the airport?
Oh, yeah.
Does it show up?
Yeah, yeah.
So, how much does the survey cost us?
Rhonda, do you know how much it costs, or?
I don't believe they bill us for this type of a survey.
No, but we have to pay to be Joint Commission certified in the lab.
Yes, I'm not, I can't recall what that is on an annual basis, but I can look it up.
So, I was just curious whether, since we're going to, you know, to another surveyor, they wanted to get one more bill from us before they were gone.
Well, we will continue to have the Joint Commission because CNV does not have a lab-specific accreditation.
Oh, okay.
So, CNV will be for the whole organization and will remain with the Joint Commission for the lab.
Okay. So, maybe they wanted to make sure they put their foot down and kept in the lab. I, you know, you always kind of wonder, you know, as much as I've had to deal with the Joint Commission over my career, they generate a lot of money on their surveys. And, you know, in fact, back when we left them here at KBH, the first time that we went away from them, one of the things was that people were complaining around the United States because they had just built a multimillion-dollar new facility and that they were generating way so much money on their surveys that was costing all the organization so much. Anyway, so I guess maybe I just have an odd view of them.
Well, to your point, though, about how much warning do you get, Mandy walked into my office and says, there's a lady named Joyce from the Joint Commission in the lobby, and she wants to talk to you. So, that's the, that's the warning we get on this, so.
I just came now instead of when the lab was under construction.
You know, and we're due after August for the state survey.
So, it still could happen during construction, and we're going to go, all right, well.
And our CNV initial survey will be after October, and I'm sure we'll be in construction then.
So, is this a random thing, or is it triggered by some concern?
It was triggered by a reported concern in this case, so. And they.
We'll be back this year because of the routine surveys that they do after August. And they will ask about how we've come along, as well as we have to submit an action plan.
How large is an action plan? Is it like volumes, or is it?
No, it's just based on the findings.
Okay.
Total, but some of them are like different references, but they're the same, same thing.
Sure. Probably like what you give a doctor a blog or.
I was looking into how the Joint Commission has it completed today, and they, in fact, do not want and have no way for you to upload documents with it, too. So, they really do have a summary. And then when they come back, they look at, they'll ask to see some of the material.
Great. Good job. That's a quick notice. Amazing to get the people together and answer the questions.
It just came up that might be the year of the survey, though. We didn't have it, we were talking about, yeah, our summary.
We may be a little grumpier by the time we get to the fourth of December. End of the year, we might not be on this in a minute.
Anything else, Mandy?
Just on the days to referral completion on page one of the QIAC council dashboard, I just want to point out that Angela's been working really hard. Angela's been with the FME team and with the other clinic managers to think about how they can share resources moving ahead on a daily basis to make sure that they're covering for that referral completion every day. And that seems to be headed in the right direction.
I have had a number of referrals lately for various things, and I have been shocked by how quickly I get that phone call. And I wasn't prepared. I'm like, oh, no, I'm going to have to call you back. I'm so sorry. But they are on it. They are, they're hopping.
Yeah. I think the other thing I just mentioned, and I believe it's in the summary there, too, that the time we stopped for physical therapy, it felt like that was related to staffing. They had one person out, out of the two PT available, so. Go back right back up.
The only thing I'd add to qualities, I asked Mandy to not continue to include the definition in each of the board packets, so if you ever need one, we have them for you, but. We're just generating.
It is.
It's really useful. I'm glad that, I guess, Amy put that together in more experience. I'm glad that she did that. And, yeah, so I'll have it, but I think it's a good idea.
Well, just one more thing I'll mention. This parent service report on QIAC council, we did receive some positive feedback in February, but because of staffing with the COVID vaccine clinic, it wasn't entered into the system the way we pull a report. It looked like we caught none, but that's not true. So, we'll try and make that data more accurate.
Great. Anything else? CEO report?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions, and I just have a few updates. First of all, I want to thank the board. I know out of your evaluation, one of the things that you asked is that the operations reports, the of the agenda, and then also that the ancillary folks, the other folks, Michelle, Jeff, and Ron also contribute on a quarterly basis. So, in your package this month, you have the first reports from them, and they're, they're all on the meeting this evening. But I really enjoyed, I learned a lot reading the reports that they submitted, so I appreciate that addition to the package. The engagement survey, and if Amanda would like to contribute to this conversation, she's welcome to do so. We are at 77% as of today, which I think is just phenomenal. So, I've heard a lot of good feedback from employees about how engaged the board has been in asking for that, and then really that connection between the survey and strategic planning. So, I first, I know it's a lot of time out of your day to come GEMB, and to do the electronic employee forms, all of that, but I really appreciate it, and I think we're seeing it in the turnout. So, today's the last day, so I think we need about 35 people to hit 80%, but 77% is amazing. So, thank you. Amanda, anything to add?
No, I would just echo that it was really an incredible response. And when you think about the fact that, you know, a big portion of our organization, we average about 30 to 40 people at a time that are on approved leaves or maternity leave, like myself, that's a huge turnout considering that some people can't do the survey or don't have access just because they are on leave and not working right now. So, it's really incredible when you think of our active workforce, and we're going to dive into it tomorrow, Jen and I, just to see the different views of data and the different detailed reporting that we can do. And so, I expect to hear a more detailed update soon with some initial thoughts. And we really look forward to talking with all of you and talking about next steps on how we can use the data effectively.
Very little massaging of the data between receiving it and you getting it. So, I think the only thing we're going to try to do is avoid sort of a data dump. So, it'll be organized, it'll be whole and available to the board and senior leadership team so that we can pull out some good work. Dr. Martin, did you have any comments on the provider engagement survey?
We are planning to do the same provider engagement survey that we did at the beginning of the values alignment process so that we have the baseline to compare to. The only difference that I'm anticipating is that the original was a paper-only, and I'd like there to be an online option as well. Dr. Albright will make sure you get the paper one. But that should be coming out in the next few days and going out to providers, and he'll get that data as well.
Yeah, paper I like.
Amanda, this is Matt. I have a quick question for you. I had someone approach me who had a couple of concerns with customer service a little bit. I mean, in general, everyone's really happy, but they had a couple of concerns with that. And I assured them that we're really working on that this year, that there's going to be a priority this year. Could you just say a little about what we're doing to, to address sort of customer service issues?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, just in terms of, of, you know, I know that you have something on the horizon. So, it's not anything specific, but just sort of what you plan specifically about.
Yeah, we actually worked last year to develop a customer service training that's ready to go, and we're actually doing our trial facilitator training here on May 6. And so, there'll be more to come on that, especially by our retreat. I plan to have a lot more information, but we are in process of rolling it out, and we're just getting the facilitator pool all trained and ready to go. But, yeah, I'm happy to provide more details on that. It's a two-hour workshop, but we also know there's many other avenues, and that's just one training. We want to definitely support our leaders with customer service training, make sure that we have kind of a comprehensive training plan for that. So, but it is in the works, and we'll also be reviewing our staff development plan together now that I'm back.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing I wanted to mention is we do have the board retreat coming up June 30 through July 2. And Mandy, if we just going to tell me if I have the date wrong. I am continuing to work on a presenter who can speak on Thursday morning to diversity, equity, and inclusiveness, and healthcare disparity. So, I have some contacts at the American Hospital Association, and Matt provided some other folks that we can talk to, but we're, so there's some good speakers out there, and we're hoping to bring them. And if it's a particularly rural, relevant contractor, we'll try to meet some of those other rural hospitals and A W P H D virtually, what as well. So, that we continue to work on. And Michelle told me this was a super secret thing, but then the Department of Health contacted me about Governor Enslay being here on Tuesday to tour the CWU vaccine site. So, I'll be up at, CWU is now vaccinating on Tuesdays up there, and evidently Governor Enslay is going by and see how things are going, so we will be up there for that. And also at your table, we talked about this before the meeting, but the board members have signed copies of our own Mitchell Perry's Cops Ropes and the Bills book. So, I'm just really pleased that we have somebody that's that talented on our staff. And then the Kittensass County Public Health Department has a letter to thanking us for the testing facilities, for our contribution to the effort to test and to vaccinate in the county, and that is signed by all of the members of Kittensass County Public Health, and I couldn't agree more. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Julie? Right. Thank you, Julie. Are the Dr. Thomas and Dr. O'Connell, are they here? You asked, are you good?
Yeah, I'll tell you what. Why don't we get started here? I'll jump in, and then hopefully Dr. Thomas should be wrapping up here, and he should be hopping on any minute. I hope something must have come up that tied him up, but it's good to see everyone. As you know, I'm Orin O'Connell. I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner based out of Family Medicine Clealum. And we just wanted to take about 10, 15 minutes to celebrate the successes of launching the AIMS model, Behavioral Health Integrated Care up at Family Medicine Clealum. I'm going to start off by sharing my screen here with a PowerPoint that I have pulled up. So, just make sure here that everyone can see my screen. Get this out of the way. Actually, Dr. Thomas just joined me. Do you want to, do you want to hop in on your computer?
Fantastic. I can do that.
Okay.
If we're starting right now?
Yeah, I'll just get started. I'll join you. Sounds good. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yep.
All right, fantastic. So, so this was, we received a grant from, it's a partnership between Primera, who actually funded the grant, and the AIMS Center out of the University of Washington. And we were part of the first cohort up at Family Medicine Clealum. And this initiative started in January of 2020, and we just actually wrapped up. So, we're going to be specifically talking about the AIMS model as pertains to the successes from this initiative. And this is actually the flyer for the last cohort. And the reason I wanted to share this flyer is because we actually have an application right now in the works for Family Medicine Allensburg, and we're hoping FME will actually be part of the final cohort. And Angela, right now, is actually coordinating a site visit with the AIMS Center. That's going to be virtual, given COVID-19. But as you can see at the bottom there, those are the five core principles of evidence-based integrated behavioral healthcare. But as you can see at the bottom there, those are the five core principles of evidence-based integrated behavioral healthcare. Now, I first just want to highlight the key individuals that made the Ames Model happen up at Family Medicine Clealum. And it really, you know, as the African saying goes, it takes a village to raise a child. And I actually interviewed in, I think it was, well, June of 2017, when I had my interview, I had presented the implementation guide of the Ames Model because I thought it would be a great value-added service for Kiddatass Valley Healthcare. And here, about a year ago, we were actually able to launch the program. And the grant was really instrumental in making this happen through resources and supporting the staff and key trainings to get this program off the ground. Now, these are again, the principles of effective behavioral health collaborative care. We want to briefly hit on the aspects of patient-centered care and population-based care. And I'm not sure how big your guys' screen is there in the board. Are you guys able to read the smaller font on this?
I can, which means everyone can.
Okay, great. So in jumping in, the backbone of the Ames Model is the team model. And this is a team model to approach common mental health problems. And when we say common mental health problems, really the low-hanging fruit is depression and anxiety. And now there's a statistic, it might, might be a little old now, but seventy percent of antidepressants are actually prescribed in the outpatient primary care setting. And there's quite a few follow-ups that happen as far as behavioral healthcare and care coordination. The Ames Model is fantastic because it adds two key individuals, right, to routine services. That's the behavioral healthcare manager, as you can see your bottom left, and then the psychiatric consultant, bottom right, that's myself. And then, of course, the medical provider, which is the PCP, the primary care provider, is the quarterback. And really, the role of the behavioral healthcare manager and the psychiatric consultant is to support each other, the medical provider, and of course, the patient. And now, Dr. Thomas, are you on?
I am on.
Did you want to share just a little bit as far as your role as PCP champion?
Absolutely. I, I think that the role of the PCP champion as the first point of contact for that patient is a really revolutionary model when it comes to behavioral health. A lot of primary care involves psychosocial care, whether it's documented and complained as the primary reason for the patient seeking care. Our patients suffer from financial stressors, psychosocial stressors at home. Oftentimes, they experience life events that are traumatizing. COVID has had an enormous effect on people's mental wellness. And primary care providers are in an ideal position to identify those problems as they arise. One of the things that patients are notoriously unable to do is recognize their moments of mental health crisis. And it often takes an outside observer to recognize how, how difficult the time is the patient is having. So primary care providers are used to stepping in and starting the conversation, sometimes initiating care. But frequently, the needs are greater than the primary care provider has time to offer. And so the Ames Model provides a, an ideal support. I love the shape of the triangle here because it emphasizes the, the strength that the team provides with regard to helping the primary care provider deliver high-quality mental health care. Oftentimes, we will identify a patient in acute crisis and make what we call a warm handoff where we discuss with the patient, get consent to bring an additional care provider into their care team. And then right away, while they're sitting in the room with me, I introduce them to Alisa Peterson, who's our licensed clinical social worker, who performs in lay language, the counseling role within this team. She's able to sit down and have a conversation with the patient, sometimes do brief interventions to help them through a moment of crisis, whether it be substance use, suicidal thoughts, or what have you. She also is able to be available for rapid entry into her, her clinic. So we're able to get those patients who are experiencing crisis into her clinic within a very short period of time, a matter of a few days typically. And that kind of support is something that hasn't existed previously. Even in the best-supported psychiatric clinics, the availability of psychiatric providers is just very scarce. And they frequently will book out their appointments by a matter of months. So it's a real blessing to be able to have someone who's available to provide counseling and intervention and whose full-time job centers around the mental wellness of that individual. If we need to, we then include the psychiatric consultant and make further medication recommendations or help to navigate complex issues around medications such as side effects that were unanticipated or medication interactions that might have an interplay with other medications that patient has already been taking. I don't know if we lost our shared screen there or not, but I don't see it anymore.
I just wanted everyone to be able to see your face for a bit.
So I, I think that that team environment really provides an ideal model for delivering behavioral health within the primary care setting, and that's something that, that is really quite revolutionary under the Ames Model.
And the, the team model of the Ames Model really highlights the emphasis on collaboration and really leveraging the strengths of each team member. And that's of course, an important value for us here at KVH. But the other important aspect that Dr. Thomas hit upon a little bit is not only the team model, but the systematic follow-up that occurs. And that leads us into the next element of the collaborative care principle that we wanted to hit upon. And I'm going to go back to my shared screen here. And that is the principle of population-based care. And we have, you know, a great EHR, but honestly, it's still a little clunky. And being able to do clinically what we want as far as care coordination to make sure that no patient falls through the cracks. Because when you have a large patient population that you're managing and that particular patient doesn't show up for an appointment or doesn't schedule an appointment, you know, right as they leave the clinic, or perhaps had a prescription for an antidepressant, but they never filled the prescription, or they filled the prescription, but they didn't refill the prescription. It adds a lot of additional variables. So how do we make sure that no patient falls through the crack? We leverage the use of a registry. And through our participation in the initiative, we actually got free access to the Ames Center out of the University of Washington's registry. We actually have this registry license for another year. It's quite affordable for us in Washington State as a health agency within the state. It's about $10,000 a year for our organization's size. But with this registry, we're able to ensure that systematic follow-up occurs, so no patient falls through the cracks. But we're also able to manage the real-time data as far as treatment response. And when I meet with Alisa to do a weekly caseload review, we'll review anywhere from ten to twelve patients, usually in our hour-long case consultation that occurs weekly. We'll look at the data to see, see the patients based off depression score with our patient health questionnaire, nine item, and our generalized anxiety disorder, seven item questionnaires. And we use that as objective measures to track the patient's progress. Now, our, our program, we hired Alisa, that was our behavioral healthcare manager. Dr. Thomas filled the role of PCP champion. I am filling the role as psychiatric consultant. The role that we were missing to launch the full model was the behavioral healthcare manager. We hired Alisa Peterson. I think she accepted the offer in April of 2020. And then she was basically in the clinic in May and then we fully launched the program in June of 2020. And I just want to talk about the story of these numbers a little bit. So if we, if we look at the numbers since June 2020, the orange line represents total patients enrolled in the program. And as of April, we've had seventy-eight patients total who've been through the program. And some of these patients may be followed up for a few times and either decided that the collaborative care program wasn't right for them or they got better and decided to discharge from the program. Currently, we have forty-one patients actively enrolled in the program on Alisa's caseload. Our goal as far as sustainability, based on our patient population and payer mix with, we're really heavier Medicare, Medicaid up in Clealum. Our goal is sixty patients in the program. And ideally, we don't want to have any more than seventy patients on Alisa's caseload to ensure that she can adequately manage each patient appropriately. But this is pretty exciting to, you know, basically, you know, we're nearly a year in and we're certainly going to hit sixty by June. I can tell you, this month alone, actually, Alisa has had twenty referrals to the program. So there's always going to, you know, be a little bit of a attrition, obviously, but you know, that's pretty cool. They've had now an impact on seventy-eight individuals. So I'm going to go back to our faces here and we could spend, I mean, a whole hour and only scratch the surface on, right, each principle of collaborative care, but just wanted to open the floor to you guys if you had any particular questions.
So if one patient, the frequency of visit with the licensed clinical social worker, would that vary, like maybe weekly visits? Or is it, I mean, is there a set number or is it just based on the patient's need?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's mostly based on the patient need, but typically visits are occurring every week to two weeks initially. Once the patient is improving, sometimes the visits are going to monthly. And there's various stages along the way in the program. Once a patient's stable, the patient will transition to what we call relapse prevention status. And that's just basically setting the patient up for success so that hopefully they don't have a recurrence of their anxiety or depression. And this program is really designed, like I said, we're really trying to target individuals who are appropriate for the collaborative care. And this is mild to moderate severity as far as mental illness. So we're not trying to replace specialty behavioral health. What we're trying to do is support the primary care provider who a lot of times is, you know, starting a medication initially and then support that patient with brief counseling interventions. When we say brief, we're expecting the patient being in the collaborative care program for anywhere from three to six months. And then, you know, some patients have been in the, you know, program six to approaching the twelve-month mark here, but it's all individualized.
So I'm Terry, I'm one of the commissioners. How much of this do you think is related to the stuff that is happening to people due to the COVID?
Yeah, Dr. Thomas, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that there's definitely been an uptick in terms of acute decompensation of pre-existing mental illness during COVID. We actually expected that to happen much earlier in the pandemic. And what we've seen really is that people weathered the first year of the pandemic quite well. This year, what we're seeing is an increase in the number of financial stressors and family stressors. And I think people have certainly had more what we would term decompensations. But I don't think that has resulted in any increase in the underlying existence of depression or anxiety. Patients may be a little more motivated to reach out and ask for help as they recognize that they're reaching their breaking point. But I do think that this is going to be a sustainable growth program even post-pandemic.
And I'll just add to that that twenty-five years ago, the teaching was somewhere between a third and a half of all primary care visits are for depression, whether the patient knows it or not.
Okay.
So this has exposed a lot of it. It's interesting because the data out of the state this week is the first time in thirteen months that they've seen a decrease in mental health holds and mental health hospitalizations.
Want to make sure that I have, have the big picture here. So your, the advantage of this model is, is it that people will get the appropriate medication and the dosage adjusted more quickly than it would under, under the typical way of dealing with it? Is it that it gives them, people are more specialized in this area and behavioral health specifically? Could you just say a word about that?
Absolutely. I think that the advantage of this model is all of the above. The most important thing is time, you know, we are all strapped for time in a fifteen-minute clinic visit where patients often come in with multiple problems that they identify as concerning to them. Unfortunately, one or more issues often get short shrift. And so it is very nice to have an in-house referral tree that allows us to give them more focused attention on this problem because this has such a great ripple effect affecting their health in other ways. So I'm able to focus on their uncontrolled blood pressure or their diabetes and simultaneously make sure that there is a next step plan already in place to manage the depression, which is comorbid and affecting their ability to manage their blood pressure and diabetes. Additionally, there are various medication and disease interactions that have to be considered. And quite often, we find that the expertise of having a psychiatric consultant in-house really adds a lot to being able to optimize those patients' care and minimize their side effects from care.
Thank you.
The other thing I'd add is that, and this is back to Orin's point, by using a registry, you're tracking a patient's trajectory in, I won't say objective because mental health is rarely objective, but at least a quasi-quantitative fashion where you've got a score that you can look at and say, okay, this doesn't look like it's working. You also have a mechanism where you can track patients that are no-showing and are at risk of being lost to follow-up. So it's, it's more robust, it brings more resources to the patient and goes a long way towards improving patient safety.
Okay, thank you.
Great, yeah, you're here.
Does health insurance play into this at all? I mean, is it a friction point or is the grant taking care of that? Or long-term, what can we expect with the health insurance world we live in?
Yeah, this is considered a, a value-based program. And the beauty of having an LICSW is that Alisa does bill for psychotherapy. And then anytime outside of the face-to-face visits, we're actually able to bill using our specific collaborative care codes that have only been in place about the last year. Now, where things get a little bit tricky is not all private payers yet are recognizing the collaborative care codes. Primera, for instance, you know, as a sponsor of this initiative, does pay for collaborative care codes. And increasingly, more and more private insurers are covering those codes. But yeah, this is a new, really a new model of care, you know, new approaches to funding. So those are things we're working on, but the program is self-sustainable and actually does act, actually, the behavioral healthcare manager actually brings in a little bit of money, a little bit more revenue at that, you know, sixty to seventy patient mark, if that's sustained.
I can, maybe Jason and I can add a little bit to this with the, as Dr. Arnaud had mentioned, that a fairly high number of these patients are Medicare and Medicaid patients. And the, with the diagnoses that they have, these are covered, both the visit with Orin and the social worker are covered by that encounter rate in the RHC clinic. So from, we actually do better with the Medicare Medicaid than we do with the, the commercial. So it's, this is, the, the grant has really helped us kind of jumpstart this. But going forward, I believe it's, it's financially sustainable for this to continue in the clinic. It's not going forward, I believe it's it's financially sustainable for this to continue in the clinic. It's not, it's not dependent upon the grant. Jason, would that be an accurate statement? Just if you heard it?
Yeah, I think you nailed it. And then the only other thing I'd add, you know, we talked a lot about the minimum visits requirements in the RHCs and the behavioral health doesn't count towards towards or against those minimal minimum visit requirements. So it's really just an added bonus to the clinic.
Good, thank you. And do you cover all, like, a fairly broad spectrum of mental health disorders?
Yes. Yeah, they're absolutely. So there is a menu, if you will, of basically evidence base as far as, you know, management, as far as, you know, what we're talking about in the collaborative care setting. But as far as the most common mental health problems, yes, we we can manage pretty much everything, depression, anxiety, PTSD. You know, even psychosis when it's stabilized. So the the menu is pretty broad. But as far as really, you know, best response as far as interventions and evidence base, anxiety and depression appears to have the most weight as far as bang for the buck for the patient.
Thank you. He's awesome. Hopefully, we'll get the grant down here. So what do we find out if we're?
I think there's a site visit that's scheduled. So with that site visit means it's, I would say, highly likely. Would that be fair, Arin?
Well, I mean, it's hard to say, right? We need to have the site visit first. I'm very hopeful. I think, you know, we're very competitive. If anyone is really interested in learning more about the model and the foundation that we've been building to not only ensure the continued success in Clealum, but in Ellensburg, I'd encourage you to get a hold of the grant application. And I, you know, me, I'd be happy to send that to you and you can browse and look at some of the specifics. But if we do get the grant, it'll start up in July. And we get another two hundred and forty five thousand dollars primarily, right, for the staff support to make this program happen. And that would occur in July and that grant, those grant funds are dispersed into payments. You know, based on our ability to meet the goals within the initiative.
Right. Yeah, thank you very much. Any questions from?
I have a silly question. What does AIMS stand for? What is the acronym?
Yeah, so AIMS stands for Advancing Integrative Mental Health Solutions. And the AIMS Center, the model, was actually conceptualized in the nineteen nineties. And now they've been basically building an evidence base and research base since then. And it's really starting to become quite overwhelming, the evidence base. And the AIMS Center, you know, part of the reason we have collaborative care codes with Medicaid and Medicare is because of some of the the research and lobbying that the University of Washington has done. So that's pretty cool. So that'll continue.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your time and the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
So we'll move on to operations. And then start off with.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you from afar. My report has started on page twenty four. And I don't have any additions to add since I've, since I submitted this. I see one typo there. I said, we're trailing new equipment. We're actually trialing new equipment in the family birthing center. So if you have been, if you have any questions for me or need clarification on any of the items that are listed, I'll be happy to take questions.
Vicky, this is Eric. I have a question for you. Sure. The photo therapy for the conducive skin-to-skin contact, how does that differ from the Philly belt? And or, you know, those covering contraptions.
Right, it allows, it allows the baby to receive the photo therapy while it's on the, on the parent, on the mom. You can, she can go ahead and breastfeed during that time and affect that. It doesn't need to be like in the bed with the eye patches on like the old model where, you know, you could only you could only remove it for feeding and changing. So it allows more of an independence and more bonding to apply during that time. There are several new varieties and I'm not sure exactly. They've tried a couple. I'm not sure exactly, and neither are they about which one they're going to land on.
Is it a blanket that just lays over baby or?
I I don't know exactly what model they're trialing now. Some are blanket variations, some are wraps. Some are, you can put in the crib as well. I think they're looking at one that can do either. So the mom can, you know, use it when they're they're holding it and also when they're sleeping. So yeah, you could, you could come and take a peek.
Yeah, I love that. That's such an important time. I'm glad that we're supporting options for making that a better experience.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or? For Vicky?
If you're in the building and see any any staff from surgery departments, they've really been working extra, extra hard these last couple of months. Their stamina is really good, their attitude is good, they're learning lots, but it is a bit stressful trying to start up all these new services and we have amped up the staff a bit and are getting new staff trained. So just a word about that. They are really working hard back there.
I'll thank them for sure.
Yeah, you don't, you don't see them very often.
Thank you, Vicky.
You're welcome.
Rhonda.
Yeah, mine starts on page twenty seven. One thing I would add is to the Clealum COVID vaccination clinic, if you saw the press release that came out today. The Washington State Department of Health and the National Guard will be hosting a COVID nineteen vaccination clinic with Moderna vaccine on Saturday, May first in Clealum at the high school. So we're pretty excited about that. Originally, that was supposed to have been a Johnson and Johnson vaccine, which was great because it was one shot and we would be done. But with that now being sequestered, we are going to be using Moderna and we will probably put off that second vaccination past the twenty eight days because day twenty eight would land on Memorial Weekend. And I think that's the only addition I had since I think everything else has been chatted about with the lab, unexpected lab survey. Any questions?
On the IV pump recalls that you have there under the pharmacy, was the problem with the software, did that cause errors delivering medication or what was the issue that required the recall of software?
You know, it didn't for us. I don't believe, we didn't have any errors. I believe they were being proactive on that. Vicky can, might be able to tell you more information as it, I think, more impacted the nursing departments there.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Rhonda, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, it was a, it was a software issue, something to do with the metrics between Canada and the United States. Because they use the, you know, the other system. It didn't impact us at all, other than the fact that we had to send, we're sending back fifteen pumps at a time to get reconfigured. So that's kind of a disruption. Pharmacy has to load and upload each time each machine. So that that's a little time consuming. But overall, the end user, it wasn't affecting the end user at all or the patients.
Okay, the reason I was asking is, you know, six, seven years ago, there was a lot of pumps that were recalled because they were causing a serious amount of errors across the United States and some pumps were actually, you know, you know, dismayed so they couldn't even sell them anymore. So I'm glad that we're not in that boat now that it's just a simple upgrade of it. That's great. Thank you, Vicky.
Rhonda, I had a quick question for Matt. Sounds like physical therapy in Clealum is going gangbusters. Is there, I'm just curious, is there a difference in the kinds of kinds of patients you see in Clealum versus Ellensburg? Are there any common themes or trends or anything?
You know, we see pretty much the same thing. Of course, we don't have a pool and can't do aquatic therapy. But just the robust family practice up there with Dr. Thomas and all the APCs keep us really busy with geriatric patients. We have orthopedic patients. We have neurological patients. Just a wide variety.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Rhonda, I was curious about the construction costs for the for the laboratory, which you noted is becoming concerning. And maybe a question for Ron, but any other thoughts you want to share on how that might impact us?
Well, I, you know, I think we've all heard how much the cost of everything is going up, whether it's lumber or conduit, just everything associated with construction right now. So it is really concerning and I know that we may have to make some, you know, modifications to what we wanted in the lab. But we do still have some things that I feel like are essential for our staff and looking at the long range needs of the lab, keeping those in mind. It's just a just a comment from me that it is a concern that we're watching closely and Ron may want to say more in his part.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll be doing one last cost estimate on that. And so hopefully we can capture some of that, those potential cost increases.
Ron, do you get the sense that these price increases are somewhat temporary? Or is this, now that they got the prices up, they're never going to go back down? Do you have a sense of that?
I would guess it's temporary. I think part of it was due to COVID and so there was, you know, in the mills and where they're making the plywood and sheet goods. I think they had to scale back their production because of that. And then in the construction side, you know, when COVID first hit, there was this kind of a halt on some projects. And so now there's a big demand and a short supply at the same time. So I think it's temporary. The other piece of that was kind of natural disasters. So a lot of the plastics come out of Texas and they had their weather and power issues down there that and that's why conduit is so expensive and just literally hard to get. So I think it's temporary, but what that, you know, timeframe is, I couldn't tell you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Rhonda? Thank you, Rhonda. Carrie Barbe.
Yeah, we can use this time to just resent Carrie Barbe because she's on vacation. So if you have some questions, we'll see who catches them.
How can she be on vacation?
I know, I know. Carrie, are you there? I think there's probably an umbrella drink involved. Not to dial in to the meeting.
My question, if anybody can answer about the fluoride harness? Is that something that we'll be collaborating with our dental providers to make sure that we're fitting the right spacing between them? Is that something that can be given at any frequency?
It's typically a primary care function.
Really?
Yeah. And has been for fifteen years. Typically done at well child visits. I'm forgetting the frequency. I want to say annually. But yeah, we started doing it in my practice in twenty ten.
Is it meant to work in tandem with varnishes that are provided at their regular dental checkups?
Well, it's a safety net. You've got a lot of kids that don't get dental care, but most kids get well child visits. And so it doesn't replace a cleaning. It doesn't replace the dental exam. It's simply a preventative. And I can't think that I can't think of a downside of getting an extra coat of varnish over the course of a year of childhood.
Insurance pays. I'm just surprised that they enter the oral cavity at all, medical and dental.
Well, you know, you gotta look in the throat, you gotta count the teeth.
What was that?
As part of a well child visit, you're looking in the mouth, you're looking in the throat, count the teeth. So you're there.
Sure.
And if it was originally opportunistic, the cost is fairly minimal. I want to say the varnish is something, the cost is well, last time I was buying it is on the order of five or 10 bucks for a dose. And it came as a small ampule. Just put it in a medicine cup and took it and saw it. Go away.
Learn something new every day. I've never heard of it as part of well child care. So that's great.
I hope you're having a good time, Carrie.
Sometimes she's having a good time. So I'm a little bit resentful, but she looks like she's having a good one.
So we'll move on to support services. We'll start off with Michelle World. Chief Public Relations Officer.
Good evening, everybody. So as Julie mentioned, this was the first of the new quarterly reports. And I don't really have anything to add, but I'm curious if this is what you were looking for or if you would like to see something different.
I felt like I was in a class. This is good, learning the difference between advertising and marketing and things like that.
It's one of those important distinctions. And with with Tricia being on board now is also extremely helpful when we're talking about making strategic decisions and truly marketing a practice or a service we provide versus general advertisements to the community so they have awareness of what we're doing. So being able to kind of lump those, look at the different services we provide, what's the appropriate audience and making marketing plans based on what our strategy and data shows is actually a lot of fun. I'm a nerd that way. Was there anything else that you would like to see on these?
I would just say Michelle and I have kind of collaborated collaborated on this because marketing and educational function is an allowable cost. Advertising is not. So we, there's the a fine distinction between that. And so we try to move as much of this to a marketing education type of thing as opposed to straight advertising. So.
Michelle, I had a question on page thirty three, the small box. You've got the horizontal, you know, client name, CPL, client goal, et cetera. But there's no vertical listing of what the what the rows mean. Are these like each one a different name or?
Yeah, so we're looking at the twenty twenty one Q two, Q three workplace health outreach graph. Is that what we're talking about?
The 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 small chart on the bottom of page thirty three is what I'm, yeah.
So if that that dropped off, so those columns there are talking about what type of, how people responded. Are they responding via the website? Are they responding via the phone? Are they responding via paper format so we can kind of gauge what's the best use? The orange slant that you're seeing going up is the total number of responses. And so ideally, on the response metric, and this is just one of the graph, ideally, that slanted line by the end of this campaign would be up to the goal of that dash line. I was just going through April and let me pull it up here on this. We are definitely we are ahead of target. We, through April, we've gained another fifteen additional clients. So we're at a total of, I'm just doing that. We've gained 32 new clients through this outreach. So we far exceeded the many clients we were hoping to get. So it, it, there's just a couple of ways of looking at it. You know, the, the cost per lead is way below average. So that's good. So to me, this is a successful campaign. If we start tomorrow, we'll see how many actual responses we get back to see if it matches industry response rate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
A question about that. Does each row then, and perhaps you touched on this and I missed it, represent a different campaign or a different month or?
Each row on that, we're talking about the horizontal axis?
We're talking the small chart of the lower right corner.
On the right side, not, not the graph, but the.
Oh, okay. Okay. Got you. Sorry. Yes, that cuts off each month. I'm sorry.
Okay. So there's eight, so that's eight months of data there?
Well, we just started it in March. So you're looking at one month and what I'm measuring on this is eight months. So we'll look at it for eight months. The reason we chose that is to match when Merit Resources is actually stopping their service. So they don't stop their service until July. So we would anticipate, you know, I would anticipate they'll collect additional clients once they have ceased providing those services to the clients.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
I know that the KVH has a pretty big presence at sporting events at the high school and at the university. How much of a presence do you have in other, other sorts of venues there, like in the student papers or yearbooks or anything like that? Is, is it exclusively at the athletic events or how does that work?
We have annual contract with, I'm going to forget the name right now, but the television screens throughout the union that have messages and things like that. We have an annual contract with them and have multiple messages going at any, any one time. And then we also do advertising through the observer based on kind of what's going on and how much student population they have. And then back when they were actually doing events, we would have a presence at that as well. So we do have a, a great relationship with the athletic department, but we try and go outside of that as much as possible as well.
You do that at the high school too? I know it's a little different there.
Yeah, the high school gives us some opportunity, some opportunities, but not a whole heck of a lot. So if you're aware of anything, I'm definitely, I'm definitely open to it.
I don't know. Probably, I mean, they have a, I think they have a student paper and a yearbook. I just, I mean, I don't read them regularly.
Yeah.
But I was, I was just curious if you, if you had that presence there.
Nothing else is jumping out immediately on those for me? Anything else for me?
Any questions? Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. And Chief Information Officer, Jeff?
Hello, everybody. So my report starts on page 35, I think. And I, same as Michelle, this is the first board report. So I kept it at a fairly high level. Obviously I can get into more details if needed. And along with that is our SRA. So we received back, oh, a couple of weeks ago, our 2020 security risk assessment. And so I added basically the submission page on that. And so outside of that, IT has been very busy with the new service lines, the new clinics that have spun up. And it takes all of IT, actually it takes all of the hospitals to spin up these new services, practices that we've not had before. We've had to create obviously new information into the EMR, so into Cerner Community Works, building out the new service line, new orders, and making sure that the process and workflow, working with all of the clinical staff to get that seamless. And that's been a great collaboration between all of the departments getting those up. And we're getting actually fairly good at it now since we've done a few of those. So as you can see in 2020, we have not slowed down in projects. So we continue to run through projects and in 2021, we're, it looks like we're just setting that same pace as far as projects that we're doing for the organization. Any questions? Other details I can provide?
Jeff's mentioned projects a number of times and, and Jeff, Tricia, Ron, anything you have to add, please jump in. But we are becoming better and better at identifying what a project is and getting all the folks at the table together. And, and Jeff, what's the name of the software we're moving forward with?
It's called Smart Sheets.
So that's the, the product that we will be using. Trish finds herself in the middle of most of these projects. But as you can imagine, you bring up a new provider, Ron's going to be involved, nursing is going to be involved, human resources, education. And it feels like IT, it feels like we're beginning to understand what all those moving parts are and get a little more coordinated and pulling it together. And Ron, Jeff and Trish in particular have experience with that and it really helps us bring that, bring these sort of events along as projects.
Can you remind me what the service is called to allow staff to tap in and out with their badge? They'll sign on. Yes. Is that, are we still anticipating that?
Yeah. So right now we're currently installing some new backup and storage software. And that will go up in Radio Hill where we have some infrastructure updates that we're doing up there before we can do that. But inside of that project, because it is new, new technology, new equipment, we're going to have 10 licenses to run a basically proof of concept to get that set up and going. And so once we're able to install that software, we're going to run through and kind of do a pilot in one area. And then from that, from then on, we can probably, you know, get everything squared away as far as the technology. And then we're probably looking towards fourth quarter of this year to be able to implement single sign on.
Fantastic. Thank you. Christmas present first back. Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
So Jeff, yeah, I appreciate the report. It was really interesting. How do you move from to best practice? So seeing the big change from 2018 to 20, is there like, you know, things to kind of move into that practice or you're doing something that other people aren't doing that?
Yeah. So I mean, I can take a great example. So one of them coming into the organization was basically password management. So how do we change passwords? What do we use? And so there was called out early in the 2018 security risk assessment that we had to kind of upgrade the way we were doing our passwords. And through a couple of years, I think in 2019, we implemented basically password management where you, you have three options now of changing your password. So you do, you either do an eight character, 16 or 25. If you do a eight character, you change every 90 days. If you do a 16, that's every six months. If you do a 25, it's, it's permanent unless you think it may have been breached. But that is all now built into the system, which was not here previously. And so that is now considered a best practice, which is what other organizations are doing as well. So.
And Jeff, the, the ones listed as high, high risk, are those the ones that are the most concerning? Is that correct?
Yeah, those are ones that you want to, you know, basically knock down to at least a medium or a low. And so that's why you see through those multiple years, the, the high risk goes down. But then you may see an uptick in the medium or the, the low because you've moved, you've kind of moved that dial. And so that's the goal. The other piece is, you know, the bad guys are always changing up what they're doing. And so it's never something that you're going to get down to zeros. It's, it's always going to be changing. It's a moving target basically through each year that you go through this. So.
Yeah, it's, it's great to see how you've tackled the, some of those high ones and brought them down. Do you have all the resources you need as you look at the, you know, the, the largest threats and so forth? That you're, like you say, trying to stay ahead of the bad guys, so to speak?
I think we do for right now. You know, we're stepping through, we have kind of a process that we're kind of tackling the low hanging fruit. And that's what we've been doing throughout the years. Obviously, as we get up to some of these others, you know, one of them, probably a couple of years from now will be, you know, where is our data center? And so those are ones that we have kind of planned out for the future as to, you know, improving that infrastructure moving forward. So.
Terrific. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
You're very important. Ron, or like Chief of Facilities? Oh, well, I tried to give you a kind of a cross section of the things we do in, in facilities. So by all means, you know, do let me know if there's some particular interest that you want me to include and I can, I can do that. Seeing that first graph, the total number of work orders, I guess, just something to put that into a little more perspective is that's basically split amongst five techs. And so we're, we're averaging about 500 a month. And so that's, that's about 100 per tech. Then on that PM and planned event chart, I kind of misspoke in, in the blurb over there. And we shoot for 100% for critical PMs, for 90% for the, the non-critical PM. So overall, we're at 90% on that. So the critical PMs are basically all the utility PMs, all those different life safety equipment and systems. And those are what we're held to on surveys. And so we target those as our high level one. Then on that work order, the deficit chart is basically just a way of tracking our, how far our backlog. And so, you know, we would like to see that there is no backlog, but you know, that's, will never happen. Mostly because of the project type work orders that we get. So you may have a work order to, you know, move, you know, women's health from, you know, one location to another. And so obviously that takes several people and, and, you know, more than one day. And so, you know, for those types of things, it'll, it'll never get to zero. But we like, you know, we're a service department and so we like to have the best services we can. So this is kind of just a way for us to keep an eye on that. And then I guess the next chart is just all the different projects that we're working on. A lot of those crossover with this, you know, same thing that Jeff is working on and Tricia. And so this kind of gives you the status of where those are at. If you have any questions on that, just let me know. And then there.
Yeah. Project status, the vertical numbers, zero through eight, is that a timeframe or what, what does the zero through eight stand for?
It's just kind of where it's at. So at the top there, like gray discovery mode is one, pricing is value two, submitted is value three. And so it's just kind of the progression of the project until you finally get to complete.
I see what you're saying now. Thank you.
Bet. And then for some facilities projects, we are working on a new fire response plan. And so there was a lot of confusion during the fire drills as to what we should do. And I think some of that comes from people have knowledge of what happens at other hospitals. And it was really different than what we did here. And so basically the, we were having people evacuate the building. And this building is really designed to be a bend in place facility. So evacuation is not your first line of defense. And so I brought in a consultant and, you know, we made sure that the building had all the right features to, to be considered a bend in place facility. And it does. And so now we're in the process of rewriting our policies to reflect the new strategy on that. And then we've just been assessing firewalls and fire doors. It's just a continual thing mostly on the firewalls. As construction goes on, we got two projects right now. As peeling goes in, that's happened on a continual basis just because technology is always changing. These firewalls get breached. And so that's just something the surveyors look at every single time. So we're trying to stay ahead of that.
On the fire door assessment, we've been having issues with the fire doors. And I can, I can report after this week's senior leadership meeting that Ron does not need his peers' advice and wisdom when it comes to how to fix the fire doors. So we all contributed our part to the discussion and Ron thanked us politely and went back to fixing the fire doors.
Papped you all on the back.
Yeah, he did. Do not bring air.
More like on the top of the head.
Yeah. We all had bright ideas to contribute and Ron was particularly patient with us that day.
Yeah, Ron, maybe next time you should tell Dr. Martin how to treat his patients.
That's about what he.
That's a scary thought.
Ron, looking at the graph for the current facilities initiative and looking at the axis there with the decimal, is this similar to the graph above with, for progression? And this is just a really close up between 5.4 and 7.2?
Exactly. Yeah.
So they're, they're very close in progression, which is why we're in decimals instead of zero through eight?
Exactly. Yep. Yeah. So the, the life safety plans, you know, the last time we had those done was in the year 2000. A lot has changed there. So that's complete now. There's a little bit of QA on that that I'm doing just to make sure we got that right. Cause we did redefine the fire rating on a couple of key walls. And so I want to make sure that that's correct, but that's virtually done. And then we're just, I'm working on just going through all the different utilities in the building defining the parts that we need to, you know, put into capital and, and update. And so we've got a good plan there. Anybody have any, any questions?
So on the Commerce and the Sunderland Grants related to the energy upgrades, do you have any idea when we expect to hear back? How far into the future?
Don't have a good feel for the Sunderland Grant, but I fully expect to hear back on the Commerce Grant this month, as they were telling us anyhow. So we should be, we should be hearing pre-soon on that one. The Sunderland Grant just submitted last week.
Okay. And those responses could dictate the order in which we kind of tackle some of these energy upgrades. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yeah. Any other questions? Ron? Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Lots going on. Lots going on. So medical staff, Chief of Staff, Dr. Ryan?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, we have just two things. The, the appointments and privileging list, which I presume you have, was 15 to go through this month. There's three new ones. Raboda Hapi Cardiologist, Frances Hall, Nurse Practitioner, North Star Lodge, and Mackenzie Kmac, who are very happy to have on an as needed basis for CRNA work in the OR, which is quite badly needed these days. And she's from Ellensburg and highly recommended. And she's from Ellensburg, and highly recommended, has been working elsewhere, uh, but happy to get back. Ken Lindsay, ED provider, Monica Romancio, ED provider. Megan Young, pediatrician, Thomas Ellingson, hospitalist, Daniel Lucas, teleradiologist, Suri Obareddy, North Star Lodge, um, oncologist, Preyron Reed, a teleradiologist, Izere Blomquist, a nurse, uh, nurse practitioner at, um, Family Medicine Ellensburg. Uh, uh, Dela, Dela, it looks like Delilah, but it's Delia Delila. Fairchild, our current nurse practitioner, I mean, nurse, uh, anesthetist. And Aaron Long, a nurse practitioner at Dr. Haney's office. And Yenmar, orthopedic PA, and Chelsea Newman, uh, family medicine, Clayellum PA. Uh, there are no medical issues of any concern with any of these applicants, and so the MEC recommends the board approve these as requested.
I'll have to approve.
A second. Motion by Matt, thanks to John to prove essentials that were reviewed by Dr. Ryan. Um, of note, I mean, this is significant, like a cardiologist in Kennesaw County is like huge, like amazing.
Let me, let me add additionally that, uh, uh, the recommendations we got from our peers were, were just over the top, that she's super excellent in every way, so it's rarely see that, that that kind of kudos to someone that's leaving, but she's much loved where she is, so.
Good for her, hi. So, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no pokes. Uh, thank you, Dr. Brian, and then you have-
Okay, I, I have one, I have one more thing that, uh, I, I don't, I think maybe Mandy put it in your, in your packet, that we have a new, uh, clinical privileges application for cardiology, which we had to create a new form, uh, which was created uh, by Shannon from other institutions and by, uh, Dr. Hoppy herself, input. Did you get that in your packet?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I understand that, uh, the board, this is, uh, needs to be re-approved by the board.
Yes, and this was reviewed and accepted by the MEC?
Yes, yes.
And can I just, I really appreciate MEC taking this on, um, because the delineation of privileges is a great tool for us to use as an organization to help identify areas where we need to educate our clinical staff and our nursing staff, and it gives Vicky the information she needs to prepare the OR for the various procedures that these new specialists are bringing to the organization, so as we move further into the specialty bench, Shannon and Dr. O'Brien are going to be working on these delineations for other specialties.
How long has it been since we've discussed delineation?
Any idea, Mandy, we, from here?
What was the question?
I, we can't remember, we're going on first credential, Dr. Carton, which is probably 15, 20 years ago.
Wow. Phenomenal, yeah.
So we do need a motion by the board to accept the application for clinical privileges for medicine department and cardiology.
I'd move to, uh, approve.
Um, taken by Erica, motion by John, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No pokes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brian. Um, Dr. Martin?
So my report is on page 54, uh, a couple of things. First, uh, the internists that we interviewed, uh, we, the feedback we're getting is every bit as mulling as what we got on Dr. Hoppy. Uh, and we've extended it out, we hope to hear it by the end of the week. Um, the other issue is, since I wrote this, I now have two of our pediatric team on extended leave, uh, which has created, uh, call issues for family birthplace. Uh, we interviewed two locums, uh, pediatric, pediatric hospitalists to fill those gaps, uh, we got two excellent candidates. The question is going, there's different scheduling requirements for them, and we're getting feedback from the team. One of the providers would prefer to do a block of call, the other would prefer to do three-day stints. Um, and so we're getting the feedback of the pediatric team as to what would be most amenable for them. But we hope to, um, in, we hope to have that in place for May, for April. Uh, existing providers have stepped up, although that was further complicated because an additional outside provider has gone on FMLA since this happened. So it's been a bit of a juggling act the last few days. Um, the other thing that I'll call out is, I mentioned, uh, the triage teams, which is a group that Dr. Alton serves on. We, we may have an opportunity to present a book we did on developing a triage system that meets the needs of rural, uh, eastern Washington, a national disaster preparedness conference, like conference, but uh, in, uh-
Everybody have a chance to read the uplifting, inspiring promise that he just snuck in there before I take any time.
I'd like the board to instruct him to stop counting his tenure in weeks.
And so this writing is no one.
I have a question for you about, um, moving to paperless credentialing.
Yes.
How will that affect what we do?
It makes that go away.
What, how will we see it? What else can I just-
Yeah, it, it would essentially be analogous to DocuSign if we could get there.
Oh, that would be phenomenal.
And so the documents would be available for you to review online, and it would be a secure connection. You would sign off on them, uh, virtually, and right now, one of the more wasteful operations in this hospital is the credentialing process, which frequently involves, uh, documents getting faxed or emailed and printed, and then manipulated, and then scanned back in, and sent somewhere else where they may or may not need to be printed, scanned back in. Uh, it, it's, it's kind of a process that takes the very worst of 21st century technology, a grass, and on to 20th century technology. Um, so just from the standpoint of efficiency and frankly, security, because that thing has, that, those folders have to be transported. Um, I, I think it's, it's something that we're exploring, we have to determine, uh, how close it comes to revenue neutral. But, uh, I, I think it's probably something is a much-needed upgrade. One of the last things that Kyle did as medical staff services coordinator was he undertook the work of scanning virtually all of our provider credentialing documents uh, into electronic format. And, uh, he actually enlisted the help of two interns, uh, who, uh, he was still, uh, lost in the copy room. But, um, there, there, it was literally all they did for days on end was scan documents. Um, I, I, it's kind of a pet peeve of mine that, that we use computers to generate so much paper anyways, but to then turn around and scan it back into the same device that printed it, it's just- I'm now taking my pet peeve out for a walk and stuff, thank you.
Do we have a hopeful timeline of when this transition might happen?
Uh, we're looking at products, uh, the one we're looking at in particular is actually a module that, uh, we use a package called MB Staff. Um, we're looking at a module that would craft onto that. Uh, the other thing that we're looking at is, uh, bringing our peer credentialing in-house. And that's a multifaceted effort, because right now we use a contractor, over whom we have varying degrees of control. And so when we bring in a new provider, one of our big challenges is knowing when they're going, when we're going to be able to get paid for the work that they do. And typically, we plan that it's going to be 90 days from when we start the process. Sometimes that's accurate, sometimes it's closer to 120. But it puts us in a position of making job offers that are, your start date will be 90 days from when you give this back to us, ready, go. Um, and most people who are looking for a new position are looking for something that they would start in 60 to 90 days anyways. So, uh, that's another process that, uh, we're looking to bring in-house, we had looked at to the rural collaborative to help with that. They aren't getting delegated to credentialing from necessarily pair mix we need them to. So it just makes sense to, to look at, and that may also be an additional, or maybe some software associated with managing that process.
Great. Look forward to hearing progress on this with the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Chief Financial Officer Scott?
Well, this is, uh, kind of the grand finale, and this is actually a report that is deserving of, uh, a grand finale. It's, it's a very good report. Um, if you would, uh, perhaps turn to page 59, the, uh, financial dashboard first, but, um, nearly, um, everything on this, uh, page moves in the right direction, we had, uh, a, a growth in operating income. We had a decline in our days receivable, and a, a growth in, um, cash and investments. Uh, the revenue cycle, folks, had a outstanding month in, uh, in bringing in receipts. The, um, the only little bit of a negative on this page is on the pair mix, and a, a, a bit of a tick-up in the, um, the self-pay percentage, but, um, we've got permission to add some additional staff and rev-cycle, and, uh, we think that with this staff, uh, we can, uh, uh, get peo- get additional people enrolled in programs and actually bring this number back down to, uh, the, the 2% range, and so, uh, um, this is just a, uh, a kind of a brief summary of, uh, encapsulation of, uh, a, a very, very good month. And if you bounce over to the next page, page 60, you can see the, um, the, uh, the financial results, we had a, um, a, a positive budget variance of, uh, $1.8 million. And we, um, at 16.8 million, that's the highest revenue month that we have had ever. And we almost went from, uh, a high, uh, 16 to 17 all in one month. And, uh, with this kind of tags on with Vicky's comments, that surgery has been busy. Uh, the, just the surgery department revenue alone had a positive revenue variance of a, a million two. So, uh, she was exactly right that, uh, uh, surgery has been busy, but other areas of the hospital have been busy, not only hospital, but the clinics have been very busy also, and you see, you'll see that in the revenue here on page 60. Um, we continue to do very well with, um, our contractuals. Um, we are being paid, uh, uh, better than we had budgeted for, and so, uh, and it's reflected in the cash receipts that are coming in. So just, um, contractuals were good, and, um, other operating revenue, 340B, uh, was a, a very good month. Um, all in all, pretty good expense control, the, we're over budget on expenses by $360,000, but, uh, the, the variances in expenses are almost all revenue, there's all a corresponding revenue variance, positive revenue variance too, uh, that caused the expense variance.
Uh, sorry, Scott?
Yes.
Purchase services? Why was there the-
Um, uh, COVID testing and COVID, uh, supplies and, uh, mainly.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, uh, a net operating income for the month of 1.12 million for, and then, um, that's a positive variance of 700 and almost 78,000. And then year-to-date, um, 1.6 million dollar positive variance, and then, so just a, uh, a, a, a good month, and if you jump back over to page 58, which is statistical page, you can see how, um, some of the variances, particularly on, and, and Vicky's cost centers down on line 12, on the, um, the, the surgery, positive surgery variance of, uh, of a 29% variance there, the GI procedure variance, but, um, also down in, um, in Rhonda's cost centers and laboratory. We continue to be very busy with COVID testing, um, and you can see the variances there. Radiology exams, positive variances there in, uh, in Rhonda's areas, and that, some of these, uh, are new providers, that Dr. Gustafson is, uh, some of the, uh, the exams that he needs, uh, or the work that he does, he orders some diagnostic, and quite a bit of diagnostic imaging, and, um, another lab work. And then you see when, in Carrie's area with the, um, oh, I, rehab visions has been, or, and the rehab department has been very busy also. And you can see that positive variance, and in the clinic visits, um, very, very positive there. So there's, uh, just a, uh, all in all, a, uh, an outstanding, outstanding month for KVH.
Want to go from, uh, year-to-date revenue, from 38 to 46 million dollars. That is huge.
If you look at, uh, page 57, oh, this is, uh, the, the overall, uh, financial indicators. And this annualized, this is kind of the positive variances that we're have, we're having. So if you look at our budget, our total charge budget is 171, 74 million dollar budget, and at the rate we're going right now, if this trend continues, we're looking at a 190 million dollar trend variance, and, uh, so I have much negative to tell you.
Yeah, I, I've had it with Scott, and I don't quite know what to, to base, uh, to bring in these things like that.
I think it's interesting that, uh, we're under budget for the number of deliveries that we, there was a lot of talk last year about how there'd be a COVID, uh, uh, increase in the number of, uh, babies brought into our community, so we haven't quite seen that yet, but, uh-
Well, we're doing our part, this, I would just say, just with, uh, with a, a comment that Bob had had, my, my son and his daughter-in-law delivered on Tuesday and here, and they, and just, uh, outstanding care by, uh, Vicky's team, Dr. Serrano was wonderful. Um, and the, the nursing staff and family birthplace were fantastic. Um, Dr. Breeden worked with, uh, the baby, and she was fantastic, just the, um, uh, just outstanding, you know, really-
It just dawned on me, we have Scott, Bob, Jason, and Nanda, all of them participated in our productivity in, in OP.
Well-
And our pediatricians continue to support orthopedics.
So Scott, what, what's your grant fee?
It was a little boy, and, uh, um, his name's Colby, and, uh, and yes, it was, anyway, just, uh, Stacy Botman and the whole team down at Family Birthplace are amazing, just-
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Great.
I echo that.
Hey, we have these numbers like, uh, that I'm, that I'm seeing. Not only with this, see if we actually get to, to that number in 2021, not only with, we know that it's the highest. Some of the bad, but we paid it just one year ago. I mean, I don't know, we don't have, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's just the organization for that. I mean, I don't know, maybe in the history of the organization for that, that's pretty.
Well, I, I, yeah, you know, there's, it starts with good clinic clinicians and, and, and we have, I'd just say, just outstanding, uh, uh, clinical staff. You know, uh, sometimes in smaller hospitals, you don't get the cream of the crop as far as providers, but that is not the case in, in Allenzberg. We have doctors that could be practicing and nurses that could be practicing anywhere. They're outstanding. So it's, uh, when you've got, um, you know, you, you can't almost not have good financial results when you have great clinicians and great providers.
Some of it has to do with the addition of services.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So one of the things Jason goes for is on that second to the bottom line on page fifty-seven, is he normalizes the growth for rate increases. So you can see what is, uh, price increase related, and then he takes that out. Um, so last year, we saw about a three percent growth. And nineteen, in twenty nineteen, it was about five point four. And we're looking at about a sixteen percent, uh, growth twenty twenty-one over twenty twenty. And again, that, that adjusts the pricing. So those are actual services delivered to the community.
Something for the F T Es, I see that we're under budget, what we budgeted on. Are we suffering from a lack of F T Es? Do we just don't need the extra, the extra F T Es?
There, there is some, the, the F T budget, you know, the, the, the number that we have down here is the total F T s that we would hire at the end of the year. So you'll see us under budget for the early part of the year. And it, as we add staff later in the year, it will, will smooth out to be what that, but, but Vicky alluded to that the, the clinic, the surgical staff have been really working hard, and she's exactly right. And they're, 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 they're doing excellent work, but also they're, they're pushed.
I know, there was a, a article in the American, uh, the American Hospital Association, I, I was looking at it. They were talking about, uh, staffing, uh, kind of like the Battle of Britain back when the Germans attacked, uh, Britain. They had all the jets that they needed, but they didn't have the pilots. And so consequently, they, they could not, uh, defend themselves. Uh, and so, uh, I saw an ad, uh, about two, three weeks ago on, uh, on the Seattle station where there was five hundred and, uh, forty-five R N jobs opened up in the Seattle area. So it was just kind of interesting. Uh, they were talking about how, uh, you know, we're kind of possibly, uh, in the same situation as the Battle of Britain where we, we have the services that we need to support of trying to find the jet pilots so that we could fly them is, uh, uh, could be a, a potential problem. So that's why when we were, you know, under the budget on F T Es, that was my question.
So we, um, on Tuesdays, when the senior leadership team meet, we have a process for approving replacement F Ts and, as well as new F Ts. And I think I, I've never in a single sitting approved as many new F Ts as I did last Tuesday. So, um, in those areas where we're seeing, uh, seeing, uh, growth like, uh, surgical services, but then also the support areas that go with that, with sterile processing and, and the downstream impact that they have. Um, so those F Ts are being posted, and Manda's folks are, are helping to get those physicians interviewed themselves, so.
All right, well, I hope we get the jet pilots that we need.
Let, let me add, add one thing. I just want to compliment, uh, uh, the whole organization on their recruiting talents. Uh, Kevin Martin, obviously, number one. Uh, he found incredible people, uh, that want to come here and work. It's, uh, just been a thrill.
Yeah. Uh, I was just going to say that, uh, that, I mean, Julie, since she got here, has been, um, has been saying that the way to not only serve the community, but to, to make the organization financially better is not to try to cut things, but to increase access and provide more services. And, uh, I mean, the truth is in the numbers, it seems to be panning out. So even if she won't tutor on foreign, I guess I'll say.
That is being manifest in the numbers. These numbers are reflecting that.
Yeah, anyway.
You, you build it, and they will come, right?
That's the hope, certainly, Dr. Brian.
So, uh, Scott, you have some expenditures?
I do have just a little bit, just, uh, I, I would just say, uh, on page sixty-five, some of the work that Mitchell Rose has been working on, uh, that two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar Ames grant is there. The application is in, and, um, we'll keep our fingers crossed. There is a, a, a meeting related to that. And then we're still in the mix for that capital budget, uh, from the legislature for District Two and District One for labs, see some other grant applications. So there's, um, um, good work going on related to, uh, to, uh, grants. And then we do have two capital requests. Um, one is for a, um, point-of-sale system for cafeteria, Jim, Jim Gallagher. And, um, and the, the actual, uh, amount is going to come in a couple thousand dol-, it's about two thousand dollars less than this amount because this included a, um, a module for the gift shop that we're not currently operating. We can, when it gets up and going, we can add that module. And the other is for, uh, some fetal monitors for the, um, uh, family birthplace. And this will, this with the purchase of these four monitors, all the monitors will be, uh, the same and, uh, and stay, and up to current standards. You know, the, the old ones are about ten years old, so this is, these are replacements.
Perhaps they're just being decentified after all these years, but the fetal monitoring systems, for four of them, that doesn't seem like that much. Or as possible as it would go, but it doesn't seem like the price tag is.
You, you wanted to pay more?
I do have to pay more. I might feel larger than I'm.
Vicky, if, can you, I, I don't have a sense of this at all. So is there anything you can help Erica with?
I think those, yeah, it's just the basic cost. We, uh, everything as far as the computer access and all of those other is already fixed and already done. So I think that, that just is the basic cost of the machine.
Sure.
And I think if there is a bit of decent sensation because we're still talking three thousand dollars each.
Right.
Comments mean, have a different context now than they used to have.
Oh, we also just.
You just showed us the, showed us the revenue for the, and said, uh, we just need to spend.
Well, you know, a couple, last month I brought you about, uh, two, two million dollar request for labs. So, you know, it's, we don't, we try to space those two million dollar requests out a little bit.
Do these separate, first one is the motion for a point-of-sale system for the cafe. We get a motion to make that purchase.
So I'll, I'll move for the.
Motion by John.
Prove the point-of-sale system.
I'll second.
Taken by Terry, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Second is a family birthplace, uh, core metric two fifty-nine C X series maternal fetal monitoring system four. Um, for the actual cost, it's seventy-four, one twenty. We get a motion to, motion by Erica, second by Matt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Good news, we should leave that in. So we all feel great going out. If you ever have any bad news, we'll shut up.
Yeah.
So we have, uh, on the seventh strategic plan update.
I gave you the one big update that I have, that we are looking for the president to talk about for me and health disparities on Thursday. Mandy, I think everything else is ready to go, right? So except we may be eating box lunches on Thursday.
Probably.
So.
Will there be an agenda published, kind of a little like what we've had at Chalane's?
Yeah.
So we know what time things are happening.
Yes.
And the employee survey, will we see that stuff prior to this?
Absolutely, yes. And the provider service, the idea is to be very familiar with that going.
Did she just say we're at a meeting next Thursday?
No, no, this is at Chalane's.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Um, we don't have any old business. Um, I'm just going to say, uh, Mitchell Perry for the book.
Yes, thank you. I was so looking forward to this.
Um, yeah, so thank you. And then we do have executive discussion.
We do. Um, Linda Navarre is going to be joining us. I would suggest probably half an hour and no action. There's also a very brief update on, um, real estate.
Okay. Yep.
I just want to point out the time, how, how, um, judicious we're being with the time and we're covering so much. I just, it's a really dense few hours of condensed, not dense, but a lot of, a lot of good stuff happening.
Great, uh, so we'll go, uh, we'll take a little bit of a break. We'll start up, uh, ten minutes, is that enough?
Yeah.
Sure. Seven-ten, we'll start.